We don't have a clock, six o'clock. If we could go ahead and call our meeting to order, please.
It's totally six o'clock.
Pardon?
Six o'clock on the nose.
On the nose, yes. If we could stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Ms. Tackett to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. All right.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We not only have a forum, we have a full house. Each of you should have received in your packet a copy of the minutes of our last council meeting from November the 11th. If you'd like to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
I make a motion to accept.
Thank you. A motion's been made?
A second.
And a second. Thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Let's see. You should have also received a copy of the latest check register. If you received that. Thank you. Public comments. We have a blank page.
Hmm.
Unless there's anyone in the audience that wishes.
Two weeks in a row, two councils in a row.
I know.
More time for you.
Thank you, Marvin. I'm glad you could fix your hair. Oh, I do have a couple of mayor's comments. Let's see. Continuing to make progress at Lanes Run Business Park. Talked with Richard Hamilton yesterday about the final coat of blacktop. They'd like to get it down, but they're gonna have to have a couple of days of 55-plus weather. If they don't, then for us to get a final, a good final surface, we might wait until springtime. But we're gonna let the weather make that call. They've got the time to do it if they get the weather to do it. Sidewalks are mostly in, most of the curbs are complete, so it really is beginning to look like something now. We just signed the contracts for water lines to be installed and fire hydrants to be installed. That's served by Kentucky American, so we had to sign those contracts with them. Very pleased to report, as we had thought would occur, Father Lynn came in Friday afternoon late and paid off the balance of the Cardone Capital Lease.
Yay.
So, all of the $1 million that could have taken 20 years to collect over the term of that capital lease has now been collected and the city has been paid in full. So, we're in the process of assigning that title to the church. They've met their, the financial part of this obligation has been met. We had a really nice ceremony at Cardone yesterday. Bishop Stowe was there. Father Lynn spoke, and we kinda did a formal recognition of Cardone coming back to the Catholic Church. And it was a nice ceremony. It becomes very clear to me that the not-for-profit agency that they have created to operate the Cardone property itself is where we'll really live out the value of the transaction and the value to the community of the transaction. It'll continue to be focused on community use and couldn't be more excited about what's underway out there. So, we're exploring different ways to structure those dollars. We, again, we prefer that they not get lost in the general fund and that we set them aside and the proceeds from them be able to be used to support things like Royal Spring Park and Yukon and Friendship Garden. It seemed to be, when talking with our reporter, it, we commented that it was a, there was a perfect symmetry to that event yesterday with Cardone coming back to the Catholic Church and in turn, the city receiving the million dollars that represents the original Toyota gift to the community. So, we were, we were a 30-year placeholder, but very excited that that's finally happened. Also wanted to just mention to the council, you've had an opportunity to read several newspaper articles, and I've had a chance to speak with many of you. Of course, I have replaced the fire chief and would like to welcome Acting Chief Eric Coulson. Chief, thank you for being here and the leadership that you're providing at this time. This was a matter of fit, and we look forward to Chief Coulson's leadership moving us forward. It was in that spirit that we went ahead last week because it was ready. We dedicated our fire training facility out there. Todd, appreciate you coming to that. They did quite a ceremony. They, they filled that thing up with smoke and then advanced hose and did the entire thing like it was a live drill for us. They're clearly gonna get a lot of use out of that facility. We did that for less than $15,000, including buying the receptacles, putting them together, and then most of our firefighters did the work necessary inside. We just bought the materials. Wanted to announce that because, of course, Thanksgiving falls on a Thursday. We will not be picking up garbage on Thursday, but our public works department will work on Friday. So, we expect to pick up Thursday and Friday's garbage on Friday. Just so you'll know, the office will not be manned on Friday, so there won't be anyone there to take phone calls, but all the men will be out working on the street and picking up the trash. So, looking forward to, looking forward to them being willing to do that and getting us cleaned up before the weekend settles in. And then a reminder before we meet again, we have the Christmas parade on December the 7th. I think that's an all-day set of events. It may start around 2:00 and then culminate with the parade at 6:00. And after the parade, I believe, is when they light the tree. And that's all my mayor comments.
Mayor, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
Todd and I had a, I guess you called it, what, lunch, breakfast with, with Robert? We do it every Monday before council meeting now. And we were talking about everything that public works doing, and one of his comments he made, which is a great comment, is that when we're raking our leaves, don't rake them in the street. Leave them on the edge, on the grass, because if it rains, all of that is going right down into our storm sewers. So, I just wanted to put, bring that out because that's very right on it. It, it makes a mess, so just rake them right through your grass, and they can still suck them up without bothering anything.
We can still clean it up.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to bring that up tonight because he said it really makes it tough in your storm sewers, and we're having enough issues with storm sewers as it is.
It bears repeating.
Okay.
And from what Eddie's told me recently, we believe we're really getting some benefit from this project. We've got ongoing where we're putting the camera through and cleaning out storm sewer pipes. They've really restored some efficiency, and Eddie thinks that we'll actually see that difference come storm time.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Let's see. Item number seven on the agenda. Chase?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have one purchase order for Pace Contracting in the amount of $18,357.76. That's for change order number three on our sand filter replacement project at wastewater treatment plant two. We have 1.1 million budgeted for this project, and the bid came in under a million, so we're well under budget even with the third change order. These were all three minor. And this project, it involves improvement to the capacity of our tertiary treatment process at the plant, and it's been approved by the design engineer as well as internal staff and the board. Any questions? I'm happy to.
Motion. Motion for approval? Thank you.
Second.
And second. Any questions for Chase on that?
Something like that, typically one bid? Or were there multiple?
We had multiple. It was of the size you, I, I don't recall exactly how many, but I'm sure it was three to four. But it takes a, one of the bigger wastewater, water contractors to come in and handle that.
Yeah.
Lots of concrete work and structural work as well.
Good deal.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What else do you have, Chase?
Answer any questions, Jeff.
It's pretty easy tonight, thank you.
Sir, thank you.
If I could back up just for a moment, I did have one other thing for public comment or mayor's comments. I wanted you all to know that we held a public hearing this morning in City Hall to hear, you know, every time we spend MAP money, we have to have a public hearing for the specific use of those streets. And we've, we have found an old problem. We've been trying to clean up street dedications and some old problems. And Eddie has been working with planning and zoning on getting to the final coat of pavement on the village at Lanes Run. Three streets, Waterside Drive, Cross Park Drive, Village Boulevard. This was a development done by Robert Sims Development that did not make it to the finish line. And there is no way to have this work done. What has been worked out to this point is that the $60,000 that these street improvements will cost are going to be split between City of Georgetown, Planning and Zoning Commission, and who was the third one, Andrea?
Ball Holmes.
Ball Holmes. The developer who finished the project. So, we will, we will have some exposure there. Charlie Perkins, on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is gonna file suit on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city to attempt to recover our $20,000 share of this.
File suit against? Yeah.
Against Bob Sims.
Against.
Yeah, right, Bob Sims?
Yeah.
Robert Sims? Because there's still other activity in properties that.
He's still around here.
Yeah.
He just walked off on this one.
But this one has been left, it's been left so long, I think they said 10 years.
Mayor, is that the same developer that was out there in Rocky Creek, Balmouth Drive?
I don't know. Robert Sims was around during my first term as mayor and had a number of projects going on.
Some things happening there, though.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Well, this one, we've got to take care of the citizens, so we're gonna call share it three ways and then sue the owner to get back our stuff. So, I just wanted you aware, be aware that we're taking these steps.
Yeah. I think there are a few others, maybe in the county, that are in a similar type situation, and maybe as time goes on, we might find more in the city. I don't know, but.
How does, how does the city go about stopping something like this to him? Anything we can do as far as stopping him building in the city of Georgetown?
We.
You know, I'm just saying because.
Our administrative hold ordinance will prohibit him from getting a building permit, a business permit. Any permit that he needs in the city of Georgetown, he cannot receive because he's, he's done this.
He's trying to sell a property.
Good.
That's why, I don't know if he's trying to do anything new, but can you put a lien against?
We're gonna encourage Charlie and our attorneys to be as aggressive as we can. This was a case where we think bonds were released or weren't adequate, and it's been a process error that now has to be fixed.
Yep.
So, it's unfortunate, but I wanted to disclose that to the council. Also, wanted the council to know, as part of mayor's comments, that we've been continuing to work on the right-in, right-out proposal at Walmart. It's been needed for some time, and it's just, it's straggled. It's, anything with the state transportation cabinet tends to straggle. We accepted bids on that. Bid openings were Thursday, and we've got a low bid that we think will be acceptable. Business owners are going to pay for these improvements that will ultimately reap the benefit. I think a group of business and property owners are gonna go together and fund this. It will be, the contract will be with the city of Georgetown, so the only caution that I've given Eddie is to make sure that before we accept obligation for a contract, that we make sure that those businesses and landowners who have indicated they will pay for it, they have put the money in so that we're not at risk.
It's a five-year thing. We've been talking about it every day.
Yeah, maybe longer.
Five years, six years.
The only investment that the city will have in this project is one the council approved two or three years ago. There was a $50,000 betterment fee, with the state caused a betterment fee, and the city and the county agreed to split that fee about three years ago, I think. So, as this gets built, we'll pay that $25,000 fee. We'll expect the county to do the same, and private business will pay for the actual road improvements themselves.
Good for that one.
You can tell Arlene's out of town. Karen got her packet late, and mine isn't divided.
You want this computer?
Thank you. It's a sad situation, but.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, well. Next item on the agenda is second reading of the annexation ordinance of 1140 East Main Street Extended. If you'd like to read that by summary, please.
An ordinance annexing into the city of Georgetown certain real property containing 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street Extended in Scott County, Kentucky. Summary, one, annexes into Georgetown city limits by written consent of the property owners in accordance with KRS 81A, 412, 17.311 acres of property located at 1140 East Main Street Extended in Scott County, Kentucky. Two, provides for effective date upon passage and publication publicly introduced and read for the first time October 28th, 2019. Publicly read the second time November 25th, 2019.
Thank you. And the sponsors here were Mr. Stone and Ms. Tackett. We'll get to discussion, but is there a motion for approval?
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. That issue is on the table for discussion. Matt, we put this off two weeks ago because you had a day off that day. And we tried to respect your day off.
Thank you.
But we did put off action on this item. Some council members had some concerns and wanted you to be able to be present to help us.
Yeah.
Are there questions about the annexation effort itself, or are most people more concerned about the zone change?
Yes, sir.
So, are you all ready for the question on the annexation?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and call the room.
Mrs. Tingle Sames?
Yes.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That is approved. The next ordinance is second reading of the zone change ordinance for the same property at 1140 East Main Street Extended.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing a total of 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street Extended in Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from A1 to R2. Summary, one, rezoning 17.311 acres located at 1140 East Main Street Extended Georgetown, Kentucky, from A1 agricultural to R2 residential. Two, provides for an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time October 28th, 2019. Publicly read the second time November 25th, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval? Motion?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and now we're ready for questions, Matt.
Yeah. So, what does R2 mean? What type of residential? R2 is a medium-density residential. It allows for single-family residential. It allows for apartment residential, up to 12 units per net acre with a maximum of six units per building. And then it allows for essentially the residential types that might fall in between that, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, things like that.
So, basically, anything goes?
I mean, not necessarily anything goes, but, I mean, it does allow up to a medium-density residential as the name indicates.
Has there been a plan brought to you to be put on this property? Or the owners just annexing it and zoning it?
The applicant did submit a concept plan. My understanding is the applicant does not intend to build the concept plan. They're seeking the zone change in order to sell the property down the line. And planning staff and the commission did not approve of the concept plan as submitted. The concept plan showed apartments proposed for the, for the site. We don't think, given the, some of the environmental concerns on the site, that that was an appropriate design, and as such, the, the planning commission did not include approval as the, of the concept plan as part of their recommendation of approval of the zone change.
Is this property part of, in the comprehensive plan on the long-term?
It, it is. This property's been in the comprehensive plan, shown within the urban service boundary as urban residential for, for many, many iterations of the comprehensive plan.
If they were to put just strictly single-home dwellings, houses on there, how many, in 17 acres, about how many houses do you guesstimate?
Yeah.
They could put on there?
That's, so, what we would say, I guess, as far as single-family dwellings, they could go up to about 4.4 units per net acre. So, once you subtract out essentially all the unusable property, the right-of-way, and, and probably those sinkhole areas as well. So, I don't, I don't have a clear estimate of what that would be because I don't know what the exact area of those sinkholes would be and how much area would be taken up as, you know, for the, for the roads, the sidewalks, things like that.
And on the apartments, you said, you said it, but I didn't catch it. About how many apartments could they? Because it sounds like as small as the property is, that's where the money's going to be to make money off of that property. So, how many apartments?
Yeah. Apartments could be at 12 units in a, per net acre. So, once again, subtracting out the unusable portions of the property as far as right-of-ways concerned, but then they're, they're also capped at a max of six units per building. And then there's other concerns or other factors that would, that would factor into it. So, even though 12 units per net acre, I think I ran the numbers earlier, comes out to about 207 potential units. I don't think that there's any way that the applicant could build anywhere near that number given, given that we calculate it based on net density as well as some of the, the things that they would have to build around, namely the sinkholes.
That, that's one of my biggest concerns. If you look in Georgetown, that's all we're building is apartments. I mean, you look up there where New Church coming in, that property there, I thought was gonna be houses because they were complaining about the house roof is gonna be above before they can look into the, but it's nothing but apartments up there. I mean, it's, and I think it's supposed to be in homes, some homes in it, and it's not the first home up there as far as.
Which one are you talking about, Marvin? Anderson?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's nothing going to work.
Yeah, I think, so that, with, with that project, they have, they have changed the master plan from what it initially came, came through, and the residential component of that is now going to be the apartments that are mostly built at this point. And then they, they changed from some single-family homes to townhomes.
See, when we, when we approved that, it was gonna be houses and a few apartments, but now they changed it, we didn't have no say about it, and they changed it all to apartments and then.
But, but not, not really. They did the apartments first, now they're gonna do the townhomes.
Yeah, but, but there's no houses, though, as far as single drilling. Yeah, single drilling.
And, you know, I, I noted in, in the staff report for, for this project in particular, I looked at, you know, the, the types of dwelling units that were, I think, I, I think I looked at about a half-mile radius, if I remember correctly. And right now, the, the dwelling units that are built or approved in that area, about 47% of those are apartment units. Another 40, 45% is, is single-family, so.
It's pretty tied.
I'm not sure what they're gonna go with. I do recommend in, in the staff report that they go with something that's, you know, maybe sort of in-between or maybe if they do want some, you know, something along the lines of townhomes, that maybe they mix in some single-family homes as well, just to keep it in, you know, fitting with the development that surrounds it already.
If we deny this tonight, have enough votes to deny it, they do have the opportunity to actually present a concept and come back later after they have something that they're actually going to pursue and come back to us again and then talk to us about it, don't they?
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the, you know, the ordinance, the zone change is, is denied here, they, they could come back and reapply. I think the, the planning commission, I think the, the bylaws reserve the right for them to not hear a new application within a year of a previously rejected one. But if, if the, the application is substantially different, then, then they would be well within the rights to apply in a month or two.
Does planning and zoning have a certain thing that they want to recommend for this property versus what could actually all be on there? Is there a recommendation from the staff? Because you said you didn't approve the concept plan that they brought to you.
Yeah. And, and our, I guess, the, our recommendation of denial on the concept plan was more related to the proximity of, you know, parking lots and buildings to the, to the sinkhole areas as well as the, the non, the number of units that were being proposed per building on the concept plan. I think that it might be possible for them to, to come back with, you know, with something, with a mixture of dwelling unit types that, that staff would recommend approval of. We just typically allow the applicants to sort of make their best proposal on the development plan that they would bring to us.
Okay. Do you know how many total apartment units we have in the community that are proposed as well as are built?
I do not know.
Because I get nothing but negative feedback on all the apartments in Georgetown that we've got. Of course, some of them are in obvious locations and that's, that has hurt that. The ones that are not seen, maybe, and this one may not be as seen, but still, it's the people in Georgetown that come to talk to me or my constituents, they do not want apartments, any more apartments in Georgetown. They feel like we have enough. So, I was just curious to know exactly how many we do have here. And I think financially, they don't support us as much as people that buy homes support us financially. So, I'm not a big fan, as you know that. I'm not a big fan of apartments.
I mean, that's, that's information I might be able to pull together and bring, bring back to the council.
The only information that I have is I understand that our, in Georgetown, the vacancy rate for rental for apartments is less than 2%. There's almost no vacancy rate.
That's kind of same as housing. We actually do have a housing shortage.
Yeah, we do.
In Georgetown as far as people buying a house. And so, you know, I would much rather concentrate on housing in Georgetown of that nature than I would apartments in Georgetown because I just don't think the community is a hog. It's the same kind of benefit as, out of apartment as they do out of somebody that's willing to invest and to buy a house. And I know we need some, but we've got so many of them that I would love to know just how many we've got because what we've got, we've got apartments and storage units going up. And I know they're going up because relationship of the apartments, that people need places to store and, and things like that. So, I would love to know how many we've got because I think we have too many. And I think in the most part, most people in Georgetown think we have too many of them at this point, Tom.
I'd like to propose a moratorium on storage units and facilities. And fireworks.
Especially that one by the railroad tracks.
And flower shops.
Okay, I'm with you there, okay.
And landscaping, lawn care, and a real estate office.
No, actually, there is another reason for that. The HOAs don't allow you to put sheds in your backyard, too. That's another.
But I'm not, I'm not against building it and stuff like that, but I, I would rather see a family move into a house and paying on a house.
Yeah.
And I'm afraid if something did happen to our economy, first people's gonna leave people in apartments because they don't have that house payment.
You know.
You know, that, that worries me more than anything.
Well, the thing about it is, is if the economy goes bad, the house might be the first thing that goes if they own a car and they'll move in the car. But then they gotta live somewhere, and they can't go back and buy a house because the credit's shot, so they'll have to be able to live somewhere.
But they'll leave Georgetown.
The reality is, we, we don't really control the supply and demand. The market controls the supply and demand. And when Toyota came to town 20-some or 30 years ago, whatever, you know, that, that kinda set the direction for Georgetown for, for its foreseeable future. that kind of set the direction for Georgetown, for, for its foreseeable future. So, we're dealing with that now, and that, that's, that's, you know, the market is dictating this. I remember, when I first got on council, we were doing a ton of annexation and zone changes. It was, literally, it was every meeting, there were multiple zone changes and annexations. We don't have that now. And back, at that time, you know, we heard a lot of the same complaints. People were concerned that we were bringing too much property into the city, there were just too many developments, and, you know, the, the supply and demand does level that out. Might take some time, but that did happen. In regards to this piece of property, I've tried to think what would be, what would be appropriate. I mean, it's, it's not well-suited for commercial, obviously. I mean, it's, it's what you might consider at the end of a, a dead-end street. I know there's a rock quarry, that's not the best neighbor. I mean, that's a pretty hard user, an industrial user, that, you know, the traffic that goes there is, is not the best. Um, so, some type of residential probably is. In terms of single-family, not everybody's going to want to be that close to the interstate either. This, this property does abut the interstate, and then you've got the, the rock quarry as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think you've got some negatives that don't play well for the single-family market. The multifamily is probably the most appealing to somebody.
And it is, and, and I just want to piggyback on that. I know you're getting ready to say something, but when you're ca- talking about single-family purchasing, they can individually sell those townhouses, one-size, or triplex, or like that. So, it can accommodate-
I mean, hate to say this, if it was my property, ideally, I'd want to see like duplexes. I think that'd kind of be a nice-
Yeah, I like duplexes and townhouses.
Some, some kind of nice ones, with some nice architectural-
For older people.
Brick and stone. The ones they're doing in Cherry Blossom are pretty doggone nice, and they seem to be selling well. Something like that, to me, would be-
And creating a, a garage space, too, that gives them that, that option.
Right, right.
So-
But I don't know that we can control that. You know, and it's not really our job to control some things, and Mr. Langford, I'm sure can, um-
No, but-
... bound on that.
Matt can make those notes on, uh, the planning and, on the, uh, what we've talked about.
But here's what the problem is. Been here long enough to see this, okay, we have fabulous ideals, what we would like to see the property done with. We have no control over that, as David's just saying. We either can say, okay, it's this zoning, or it's this zoning. So, once we let the zoning go, then it's just like Anderson's apartment out, uh, his development was all glorious, and now we've got these Cyclops sitting out there, and that's what it is. We turn loose of it, and then you all got it, and then you all have restrictions to stay in. The only control we have is what the zoning is going to be or not to be. And that's it. Once we let go of the zoning, it's done. It's out of our hands at that point in time. And we've seen projects after project, after project in town, that we heard it was going to be X, Y, and Z, and then when we let go of it, 'cause we trusted the person standing in front of us, to do X, Y, and Z, they didn't even come close to what we had envisioned. And that's where we let people down in the community, is when we let go of it like that. So, but I do believe that somebody has a piece of property, they have a right to do what they want to do on it, but it's our job to say, we're going to do a zoning of this, or this, or this. But once we let go of it, it's gone. So, our ideals, and even what they come to us, may not be. And I'm telling you, we've got too many apartments in this community. I don't care what happens, as David was talking about earlier. In the beginning, we needed houses, we got houses, we got annexation, we were nervous about that. Now, we've got all these apartments, and I am becoming very nervous about that, and hearing from the citizens, that, that is not the way they want our community, what they want our community to look like and to be like. And, if you go back, you studied urban renewal, you had to. If you go back and you look at it, when apartments come, and that, that trend changes, and it goes back to other areas, those apartments fall apart, they're neglected, they go down, and they go down quicker than most subdivisions, and those areas go down, and they get neglected. And, so, I am not supportive of the zone change, only because that's what I feel like's going to happen to it, because of the small areas, it's going to be apartments.
Matt, can I, I've got a question to ask, and then I was going to make a statement. The question, if I could, if we could go back, you said the conceptual drawing was denied because of environmental, uh, either issues or concerns?
Yeah, part, I mean, partly. That was part of the, the concern with the conceptual drawing.
What were the environmental concerns?
Uh, there, there's two, uh, areas that are designated on USGS maps as, uh, being sinkholes.
Okay.
And there were some, uh, some of the residences were in those areas, and that's not something that the planning commission would, would support. It's not something that ordinances would allow.
So, in that case, would they just be, nothing can, I would hope that this is passed, that nothing would ever be built on those sinkholes?
Uh, correct.
If this does pass?
Yes, that is correct. There's or, we, the, the ordinances would not, would not allow, uh, for residences to be built in sinkhole areas.
Okay. Uh, statement I've got is, is, uh, listening and learning. And mayor, please correct me if I'm wrong here, I, my, my numbers might not be correct, and if they're not, please correct me. But, on average, every year now, there's anywhere from eight-hundred people to a thousand people moving into this county.
Nine-hundred to a thousand.
Not everybody can afford to buy a house, not everybody wants to buy a house. And if they're going to live here, and they're going to work here, they've got to have someplace to live. Now, apartments, you know, we can disagree, and I respect that. I, about a week and a half ago, I spent several hours out at the, uh, the apartment complex across the road from Kroger. And they're at, right at ninety-eight percent occupancy rate with a waiting list. And, uh, I know they've got plans to build additional apartments, and they're, they're filled as quick as they're being built. And I'm assuming the Emerson property is the same way. As soon as, there, there's a reason, those, those apartments are going up first. Now, we, we can disagree, and again, I respect that. In a, in a perfect world, where, you know, we're single-family homes all over this entire city and county, but it, that's not reality. Uh, and again, that, that, we can disagree, and I respect that. I, I guess my concern will be, is that, you know, the planning commission unanimously supported this, if I'm not mistaken, it was unanimous.
That's correct.
And it, you know, if we've got concerns about apartments, is this the appropriate place to talk about that, when we're voting on the zone change and annexation, or do we need to be proactive in addressing that in a different manner moving forward? I know, I think there's already been some discussion on that item, um, you know, do we address that in a different manner, before it gets to this point?
That's why you have a comp plan, and that's why you do readdress that every five years. So, I mean, there's a lot of property that's R2 that's out there that potentially could be apartments. I mean, a lot of subdivisions come to us, and there are two, and they turn out to be single-family. But, we can't cont, you know, I mean, based on the way it's structured right now, I don't think we can control that.
Isn't the comp, uh-
I'm sorry, please, go ahead.
The comp plan's a suggestion, right?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's a, a policy-
It's not a binding, it's, yeah, it's a policy. Because I was on the committees and worked with you and-
Is it binding if we vote for this to be R2, that you can't make it? Is there a R3 or 4 that's higher?
There is an R3, and, and one of the things that the, the comprehensive plan did was designate which areas specifically would be more appropriate for the R3 zoning, because that is our, our highest-density residential.
Right.
Um, you know, we could look to do something similar with, with the next comp plan, and maybe look at areas that might be more appropriate for R2, uh, density as well, but that's not something that's necessarily in our current comprehensive plan.
And if you do, we've talked about the fact that we, we vote for something, and then some changes get made later on, that we don't have any control over. You can't change it from R2 without our permission.
Correct.
To something with more density.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's, Matt, I'd like to ask another question or two about that.
Mm-hmm.
Dennis Anderson's original master plan had apartments in it, is that correct?
That is correct.
The apartments that have been built were in the master plan.
Yes, and, and the-
So, to this point, just to be clear, there've been statements made around this table that people like Dennis Anderson have just willy-nilly changed their plan, and we don't get any say-so. He hasn't built any more apartments than his master plan called for, is that correct?
That is correct.
The only change that's being considered is townhouses rather than singly-family homes. So, that is not an example of a developer ignoring the council's wishes. Council's expressed a lot of angst over the last handful of years about zone changes, when they know that they can only vote up or down on a zone change, and they do not control the final development plan, Tammy. That's what is the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is the final development plan. We have had developers stand before us on two different cases, two different instances, where we have asked the developer to make changes in materials or facades that they didn't have to make, and they agreed to do that, and as to my understanding, everyone that has agreed to do that has done exactly what they told this council they'll do. So, I'm at a loss to explain these comments around the table about developers doing what they want and changing their plans without ever coming back to the council. That just doesn't happen, folks, I'm, that just doesn't happen.
And on that note, I'd like to move forward and say that I don't disagree with Mark when he was talking about going over there and seeing what the percentage was of the people, of the vacancy rate, because me, as myself, uh, I have several hundred units myself, and we're at like ninety-nine percent capacity. We have to turn people away. And the other thing that I want to ask, to make sure that I understand, when you talk about this property having sinkholes, wherever they may be, does that not take down the net density, because you can't build over a sinkhole? Me, as a realtor, I would be definitely telling my investor that there's sinkholes on that property.
Um, the-
Sinkholes all over, all the property around there.
The, the ordinance does allow them to count the, the area in the sinkholes, um, towards the number of possible dwelling units.
Oh, okay.
But, there are other factors that would then sort of limit them, you know, when you, when you remove that area to build on, you don't have as much, obviously, area for things like parking, you know, and, and the actual buildings themselves. If you can only build, you know, six units per building, you know, there's a certain number of, you know, buildings that you could then fit on the remainder of the property, even if you sort of are allowed to count the, the area that those sinkholes took up, if that makes sense.
Kind of. At the end of the day, you're still saying you can only put so many units on the property because of that.
Yeah, the, the, the shape, I mean, the, the shape of the property and things like that are going to constrain it, and it's, I would say it's highly unlikely that somebody would ever be able to fit the two-hundred-and-seven units that are the-
On the seventeen acres.
Potential maximum.
Mathematically possible. Mark, to, to more specifically answer your question, and what Tammy referred to, and what Todd and Andrew and I spent a bunch of time talking about at the end of last week, is, we've all heard various concerns from the community about what is the proper amount of apartments, and all of us have those conversations. So, what is the best tool for us to use to express our concern about that, or do we need more control than we've had in the past? The comprehensive plan is one effort. But the other one, if we, if we just use the comprehensive plan, the council's reduced to voting yes or no on a zone change. That's the only authority that, it's the ultimate authority, but it's the very limited authority that the council has. And frankly, we know that simply voting against a, a zone change because I don't want any more apartments is not a reason to deny a zone change, it's going to stand up in court. It may be what you believe, but it will not stand up in court. What, what I think Todd and I talked about at length, and I think that we need to consider, is asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to start reviewing your subdivision regulations. The place where the council and the court can give the planning commission more direction and more tools to use in making the decisions that are going to make the court and the council more comfortable.
Okay.
It's, it's subdivision regulations, I think, where we can really make an impact, where the zoning ordinance itself is, is a blunt object. You can club someone to death with a zone change, but you don't have any nuanced authority to do what you're really wanting to accomplish. I believe a comprehensive review of subdivision regulations, while controversial in and of itself, it's a lo, it's a big effort. But, we believe it's time for, for you all, as a Planning and Zoning Commission staff, to kick around the idea, a, a serious conversation about updating subdivision regulations. Even if you need outside consulting help, I've talked to the judge, the court and the council are both really interested in this issue, and we lack the tools that the council wants today. So, however we vote on this one, we vote on this one. But I think going forward, the tools that you really want in your bag, bag of tools is, uh, subdivision regulations.
Mayor, and to go along with that, and I think we've talked about this before, would be something I'm interested in, and I think most of us probably are, would be, um, architectural standards as well, for buildings that, that might be along Broadway, South Broadway, North Broadway, or Main Street. And we've, we've seen some buildings pop up on these streets that don't have a whole lot of architectural appeal. And other communities do that. To give an example, um, the auto parts store, um, the new O'Reilly's in Georgetown, pretty plain, pretty generic.
Yeah.
You go to Frankfurt on Versailles Road, and you look at theirs, and it's like, well, that's pretty nice, you know, it's got several features that are a little different than ours, and it was built before ours. So, it's not that that's the new prototype, it was there. And I asked, I said, why is that the case? And they said, well, Frankfurt held us to a little bit higher standard than Georgetown did.
So, there you go.
That's what I thought for a long time, because, you know, when you go to other cities like Savannah or so, where even like the McDonald's fits in, you know, because it's in the historical standard, but it's having the, the laws and the ordinance to do it, so...
And there's got to be some balance there.
There's balance, yeah.
Because you can't over-design something where nobody can afford to do, make it so impractical. And, and that's, that's a difficult thing, probably.
Classic example for here, David, that you'll recall, was the, uh, the discussion over the Kohl's development.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And our planning commission, via Kelly Klepper-
Yeah.
-insisted on a different facade than Kohl's normally did. And they said, we'll leave.
Yeah.
Then he insisted that they have two entrances to really fit the property and fit what would work best for us. And Kohl's said, we're, we're going to leave, we can't do that.
Yeah.
And most of the Georgetown business community lined up to pummel the Planning and Zoning Commission over the fact, you're, you're going to make us lose Kohl's.
Yeah.
We didn't lose Kohl's. Kohl's did everything that we asked them to do.
Mm-hmm.
But it, it, it's finding a balance that's fair enough that you can defend.
Yeah.
And then as Polly said, passing ordinance, pass the standards in it here.
That's what we have to do, it's all about the laws and, you know, what we have on the books. We can talk all day long, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you all might look up or, or be thinking about subdivision regulations and understand how complex of an undertaking we're asking them to do for us.
Yeah.
And you all need to have a serious conversation about, is it doable, is it, what timeline you can bring back to us, what outside help you're going to need. I, I think that's the answer that this council's searching for.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can certainly look into that and, and get back with you on that.
And, uh, just to refresh everybody's, uh, memory, since this came to the council as a positive recommendation from planning and zoning, it takes a majority of the council to reject the application. Mayor does not get a vote in zoning issues. So, it takes five council votes to defeat or to reject a planning commission recommendation.
Okay, can I ask Matt another quick question?
Yes, sir.
Matt, do you, can you tell us some other R2 properties in Georgetown?
Um, there, there's a lot, there's a lot.
I know there's a lot.
A, a lot of the residential properties on Main Street, um, come to mind, uh, much of the, the area in the, the peninsula area and, and Boston. in the peninsula area and Boston. I would say R2 is probably our most prominent, our most used residential district in Georgetown.
Kane Wood, would Kane Wood have some R2?
Um, I'm trying to... It may, I wanna say that a lot of Kane Wood is single-family, R1B or C probably.
But you think R2 is the most prominent zone classification?
I think it's probably the most that's used in the city, yeah. Yeah, R2 and R1C are probably the most frequently used.
Yeah. Yeah, I wish, I wish we had the ability, because I enjoyed this part, I wish we could say, well, you need this, you know, tree, see a landscaping plan, see a sidewalk plan, and see all kinds of, you know, have the roads separate and have landscaping meetings in the middle of it, you know, just, I wish we could implement those things. But I guess that's something the mayor, you're talking about, having them perhaps be able to implement.
Yes.
Because wouldn't you even put the road issue?
This council can legislate privately, but not individually.
You know, this is not dissimilar for when, a couple of years ago, the Board of Adjustments rejected the application for the large flag, and there was a lot of controversy over that. They applied the tools that we had provided them, and they reached their decision. Council created another tool for them to use, and they employed that tool, and they were able to improve it. This is simply us giving the Planning and Zoning Commission the tools that we want them to have to represent your concerns. If, yes, sir, Brett. Yes, sir.
Brent Combs, Thoroughbred Engineering. I've been here a long time, seen a lot of things. And so I've got two avenues I just wanted to briefly talk on. And the first off, it'll be an extension of this conversation here, and subdivision regulations are a good point, but what I'm hearing, you might want to also consider splitting and expanding upon the zoning classifications. A lot of the reason people want R2 is because you can't have duplexes in the R1s, but the R2 also has the multifamily. So if you had more categories, Lexington has five or six residential categories, if you have more categories, now all of a sudden your up and down vote does the restriction that you want. The R2 might be single-family and duplex-only, and R3 might be triplex and fourplex, and then R5 might, you get my point?
Yeah.
In other words, split those zoning classifications into much narrower objects, and then your up and down vote kind of gives you that flex, that restriction that you're at.
That's an excellent idea.
Yeah, and that's the kind of thing we need Planning and Zoning to recommend to us, you know, for approval, obviously.
So that was one thing. Now, switching gears, for this project, at the Planning and Zoning meeting, it was very clear that, I don't, I'm not sure it got in the recommendation, but it's very clear in the discussion that the planning commission was really thinking more towards the single-family, maybe duplex kind of density for this project, but they did say that they were willing to zone R2 with the understanding that whoever decided to develop it had to come back and get approval on the density. That might not be the best way to do it, but that was my understanding at the meeting, is how that came about. So, and then the last thing I'll say real quickly is, over all these years, there's been many, many, and Charlie Perkins will say this isn't legal, but over the years, many, many times, the applicant has volunteered to restrict the density within the zoning. And it goes back to what I was saying earlier, sometimes it's because the zoning is so wide, planning commission say, well, we don't mind the R2, but really don't want this 12, we want down around the eight. And so the applicant will say, well, we agree to the eight then. And so that might even be something that's also available to you all. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Bruce Langford called the applicant.
From what I'm hearing, I won't debate with you, too many apartments, not enough, too many residential, not enough. I want to address just this project tonight, and that centers around one thing, the comprehensive plan, which is really the basis for most reclassifications. This application was filed, giving consideration to the current comprehensive plan. It was considered by the planning commission, giving consideration to the current comprehensive plan. That comprehensive plan was approved by this city council, maybe not you members in particular, but by the city council. The comprehensive plan is subject to review at least every five years, but it could be reviewed, I suppose, every year, every month, every two years. What I'm hearing is, you're not really satisfied with the comprehensive plan as it affects this project. There is an answer, not with respect to this project, but in the future. Review the comprehensive plan if you think this property or property like this should be used differently. You can say so in that comprehensive plan. The problem with doing that with this project is, as I've said before, the applicant filed in consideration of the current plan, the planning commission considered the application in consideration of the current plan, that was the plan that you told them to follow, they followed it, now you're gonna say, well, that don't make any difference, we don't like that plan now for this project. I don't think that's fair. That's all I really, I really am saying to you, you can change it, but you can't change it now. They've done everything you said up to this point, and now you're gonna say, well, that's no good, we don't like that anymore. Don't like it anymore is okay, and I might even personally agree with you. Maybe we've got enough apartments, maybe we've got too many. The occupancy rate of two percent, that's small. Be hard to convince somebody that we had too many with a two percent occupancy rate. But if you want to change the plan, fine, but you have to change it in accordance with your own rules. You have to follow your own rules. So I'm simply saying that everything that's been done to date follows what you said should be done. To now say, that's not good enough, with all respects, I submit to you, that's not Thank you, question? Any questions? Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, I think he said it well.
I think he said it well. If there are no further questions of Bruce or Matt?
No.
Then we have motion in a second, we'll call the roll. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Stinglese?
No.
Mrs. Lesby Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
No.
Okay, thank you. The ordinance passes five to three. Next item on the agenda...
Before we go to the next item?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we do turn this over to Planning and Zoning, whether they can do it or we need to hire a consultant to examine, recommend, and rewrite our subdivision regulations, and shall include any development or infrastructure fees, and also include additional zoning classifications.
That's a motion, thank you.
I'll second it.
And it's been seconded.
Say that, I'd like to hear it one more time.
You're gonna have to say that.
Well, uh...
I think it's...
Make a motion that we turn it to P and Z, and if they can determine that they can handle it, great, if they need to hire a consultant, that's fine as well. But we need to examine, recommend, and rewrite our subdivision regulations, and it shall include development and infrastructure fees, and also include additional zoning classifications.
Just like you was talking about.
I'm in favor of all those three things, Todd. The thing that I want to be careful with, the subdivision regulations themselves are gonna be a massive undertaking. The development of impact fees is an equally major undertaking. To lump the two of them together and ask them to deliver both...
I mean, we need to split, let's not...
Might be a real heavy lift.
Yeah, and it's a little bit, hey, I, right here, right now, it sounds fine, it's just a little bit of a surprise, I mean, I say a surprise, I mean, I wasn't anticipating you to say that. I don't necessarily disagree, it wouldn't hurt to think about it for a couple of weeks and maybe consider separating them and everything that would go into it. I mean, it's hard to argue with.
I think the rezoning of the classifications of zoning would be something to look at that Brett brought up.
Yeah.
I think Todd's got the right idea, and we really developed this idea a lot last Friday, when we talked through this a lot. Todd, the only delay I would suggest is, if we could let Planning and Zoning get back with us about the scope...
All in favor of that.
And how they would approach it, then I think the council should issue a directive, once we understand well enough to issue the directive.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with that.
If we could get some feedback, then I'd be happy to support that.
Why don't you let us get with P and Z, and we might even be able to... We might discuss actually putting together an RFQ or something like that, and we could at least actually hear proposals from folks, not, you know, with no obligation to hire anyone, we could just hear what people have to say. Or if P and Z wants to talk about doing it themselves or whatever, then we would at least have a basis for telling you what that study might look like.
Yeah, because if, I mean, if that's the case, there's gonna need to be some funding allocated towards this work, and maybe that's something that everybody chips in, county and city, everybody together collectively work on this.
I think the Kelly will be willing.
Yeah.
I withdraw my motion, if we're gonna do that, that's fine.
I think it's a very positive thing, I just...
We'll bring you back enough information to remake that.
That's fine, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
I think it is. Actually, I had somebody stop me yesterday, and they mentioned the impact fees, so...
And I think we've got Brent Combs, he's a private citizen, he'd probably be a volunteer.
There you go.
Mayor, I don't want to, may I say something? Please. Don't want to unduly prolong the meeting, we do that enough, but I just want to say that you don't know it, but very often I get calls about projects that are, would be controversial, and I try to stop them at that point. You don't know about those that don't come to you, because I, and I suppose other lawyers say, it won't work, they won't do it, it'll be controversial, they won't approve it, I don't want to do it, I don't want to be voted down. So a lot of that happens, a lot of times you don't know about it. And one other quick comment, I've worked with the planning and zoning system throughout the counties around. This gentleman, Andrew, Devin, and your secretary, beat them all. I have a lot of stuff going through the mill right now, which I'm throwing at Devin, and I apologize for it, I apologize for the controversies, but these people work well with the people that they deal with. They should, that should be said, and you should know it.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you very much, Bruce.
Nice to know that.
Good. All right, if we are finished with 8B, we'll move to item 8C, first reading of an amendment to the Human Rights Commission ordinance, sponsors, Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Showalter. You'll recall, everyone's up to date on this, we had first reading of a Human Rights Commission ordinance at the last meeting. Ms. Erdley offered some pretty productive or thoughtful suggestions about ways to change the ordinance, and the sponsors of the ordinance went through those potential changes and thought several were very advantageous.
And I would like to thank the sponsors and also Devin for going through that and taking time out to, you know, address those concerns, so thank you all for doing that.
And some of those have been adopted. The fact that we added a residency requirement meant that we had to go back for a first reading. That was a substantial enough change to where we have to go back to first reading. Now, we did slightly alter that recommendation to match the Georgetown Ethics Commission, which is the most restrictive board that we have today in terms of residency, and it requires that you be a Scott County resident for one year. So we've mirrored that language here. And then, I think, Devin, a number of procedure steps.
Yeah, the complaint procedure, yeah, 519, yeah.
That gave clarity, the opportunity for an attorney, and all those things have been spelled out.
I think it's good, because it gives the commission a guideline, you know, kind of going into it, and gives it some structure.
Right, and provides an opportunity for either settlement on the front end or anciliation agreement prior to getting to the hearing phase.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So, we're pleased to bring this back to you as a first reading tonight, but the sponsors, what we bring back to you tonight does not contain everything that was suggested. And wanted to give you an opportunity, probably if any of those you wanted to pursue, we'd be glad to have a council discussion and let them vote on whether to include any further provisions or not.
You know, I think it's, you know, I think it's good, and I think, you know, a lot of people, you know, are gonna be happy that it's here in Georgetown and not in Lexington, so, you know, I think we just move forward.
Okay, good, if you'd read.
An ordinance amending Georgetown Code of Ordinances, Chapter 5, Article 2, regarding the Human Rights Commission. Summary, 1, amends Chapter 5 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances to create a Georgetown Human Rights Commission. 2, establishes the membership and powers of the commission, defines the process for evaluating complaints, and provides for enforcement of orders issued by the commission. 3, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severalability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov, introduced and publicly read for the first time November 25, 2019.
Thank you, that'll constitute first reading, and we would anticipate second reading and roll call vote at our only meeting in December. Item D is a resolution accepting our community development block grant funds.
Motion, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You will note in the resolution that there's a $13,250 cultural historic study that's required as a part of the application, that will be payable out of our match part of the funds, so it was anticipated. Let's see, we have a, well, following that, a municipal order approving the contract with Palmer Engineering for the CDBG Culture Historic Study.
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item F and G are both municipal orders approving a contract for, one with Blaze Enterprises and one with Grants Excavating for Code Enforcement Demolition Services. We took bids on demolition services, and we found this remarkable situation with our two bidders. One bidder was clearly the cheapest on buildings under a certain square footage, and the other contractor was clearly cheaper on buildings with more square footage. So we just brought them in, they agreed, we split the contract, we'll call one of them if it's one size, we'll call the other one if it's a larger size. This lets Code Enforcement have these bids, and they don't have to go out every time they need to do something. And we've got some things that will be demolished soon, pretty soon.
Motion for approval, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded.
For both.
For both, yes, thank you. If there are no questions about the two municipal orders, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, those are approved. Item 9 is for dispatch, a municipal order approving a change order for the radio project. We tried so hard not to bring you another change order for the radio project, but we have to. This is for our part, I... This is for, for our part, I, these are for the shoulder mounted radios that the fire department uses. I think there was a mistake in the original order. We got conventional shoulder mounted radios. Fire department really needs the larger scale where they can grab it with a gloved hand and be able to mash the button, they're water resistant and heat resistant. For, for the total of all the fire departments, this change order is for $30,000. City would have responsibility for $15,000. We are taking $6,000 out of another fire department line item. So that leaves $9,000 that we have to fund. The municipal order reads that we will fund that with a future budget amendment. Stacy just got a workers comp refund in the amount of $30,000 that at some point we'll put in an amended budget, so we know we can cover this additional expense on those, fire department.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no questions about that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Under human resources, we have a second reading of an amendment to the personnel ordinance with Mr. Lesby and Mr. Stone as the sponsors. This is the one that simply clarifies that revenue commission workers are not city employees.
An ordinance clarifying that the revenue commission staff are not part of the City of Georgetown Personnel Ordinance. Summary, 1, amends Section 2-111(c) of the Code of Ordinances to support the classifications, associated pay grades, and authorized positions for each department to clarify that Georgetown Scott County Revenue Commission staff are not employees of the city and are only associated with the city for certain matters. 2, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severalability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Port Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read for the first time November 11th, 2019. Publicly read the second time November 25th, 2019.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion's been made for approval.
Second, Mayor.
And seconded. If there are no questions, we'll call the roll.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames.
Yes.
Mr. Lesby Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. Lesby.
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Showalter.
Yes. While we're on the revenue commission, at our revenue commission meeting this past, this week, last week, this week just started, didn't it? At our revenue commission meeting last week.
You're in a hurry to get this week over, aren't you?
Just till Thursday, just till Thursday. Scott Hall had been working on a reorganization plan for the revenue commission. Since Scott's arrival three years ago, he's done a lo, a big turnaround, but he, he hasn't changed the staff any down there. He said he didn't want to come in immediately and simply ask for staff changes until he really understood it. But at this point, you're aware that we hired away from the Kentucky League of Cities a real bright young attorney, Jessica Miller, who used to handle all of KLC's training and some of their legal advice, and she's been working with Scott as a revenue analyst. At last Wednesday's meeting, we gave, we created a new title, Assistant Director. And Assistant Director and Head of Collections. She'll lose her legal expertise to help us with collections effort, and then we'll backfill her spot. We think they're looking at some more sophisticated collection activities to reduce what Scott has educated us to, reduce the tax gap. And the tax gap is real simply what, what we're owed by the tax code and what we actually get.
Yeah.
And there are different factors that affect the tax gap. It's, it can be failure to file, you know, do we even know they're out there? So that's part of the audit trail on the collections, are, are we identifying all the people that should be paying and are they filing? Secondly, are they filing a complete return or are they not filing a complete return? And then finally, do we have audit capacity to occasionally go back and check that work? It's a lot more sophisticated process than it was in the past. And revenue commissioners, which are Superintendent Hub, Judge Executive Covington, and myself, believe that we will actually see more funds coming in because of the personnel changes. So really pleased that, to report that for, for Scott and Jessica Miller. And those expenses are netted, are completely netted out of our proceeds, paid 40% by the city, 40% by the county, and 20% by the school system. Let's see, that leaves us with council comments.
Mayor, before we go to council comments, I'd like to ask if we could go into executive session for, talk about personnel pending litigation, since things have been in the newspaper, probably better to talk about them in executive session. I'd like to make a motion, if I can get a second to get the council to vote for it. Make a motion to, what is the, what is the KRS 601 something, something, something?
Language real fast. Are you regarding personnel?
Personnel and pending lit, po, potential pending litigation.
Can't go to discuss general personnel.
Yeah, that's to either pending litigation or.
Appointment, dis, or dismissal of potential.
And I think you've hit it. I think that covers it.
I'll second.
Talk amongst yourselves and pull in.
We, we. We typically, when we vote for an executive session, try and quote the statute number. It, it really doesn't change what we're doing, but we make an effort to quote the statute number.
It's KRS something.
We'll give you that KRS number.
Yeah, if, if I get the, if the council votes for it, that is.
We need to read it verbatim? I move to enter executive session, KRS 601(c)(8101f), to conduct discussion, which might lead to the appointment of this one or dismissal of individual employee.
And so that was your motion?
That was my motion.
And Polly has seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. We'll be in executive session for just a few moments. We're back in regular session now. While in executive session, we discussed, uh...
Personnel.
Person- personnel pending litigation.
No, personnel.
Personnel. Uh, and, uh, obviously no action taken during the executive session. We've taken your notes.
Yeah, I could've gone home.
So, uh, I think, believe we're down to item eleven on the agenda. Council comments? Tammy, would you like to start?
I will start, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I believe that you're aware, but I want to bring it up in case you are not, that I had, um, a citizen contact me about a, um, pit bull situation.
I had the same call.
Uh, and I did, um, they asked me to bring it up at the council meeting, and, uh, what, what happened was that a dog from a neighbor's yard came onto their porch and attacked their, uh, dog pretty seriously. And the person would like for us to explore the possibility, think about the possibility of having a pit bull ban in the city of Georgetown.
I'm, I'm working with him on it, and I'm actually gonna...
Excellent.
Um, work with him and code enforcement, um, 'cause that's, that's our mechanism for enforcing our current ordinances regarding vicious animals or anything like that. So, I think, I actually sent an email to the code enforcement folks earlier today about us getting together and getting, getting a report from him, and we have a photo and everything like that, so we're gonna work with him on that, absolutely.
Yeah, because we actually already have an ordinance in place, it doesn't have to be...
Has to be on the lease.
Because all pits are not bad.
Yeah, all pits are.
All pits are bad. You're, you're really gonna have a problem with a ban.
My daughter is a pit bull.
Yeah, they're, they're dogs.
And enforce it on the lease, the lease law.
But it's the vicious animals, so it's already on the books for vicious animals.
Right.
Yeah. In, in this case, I think we all got bombarded with photos and emails right before the council meeting and, uh...
Thank you, I figured that you were on it, but I did say that I would bring it up, so...
Pretty graphic.
I left him a voicemail the other day and we haven't been able to connect, but I'm gonna call him again tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Seth JP? Mark? Karen?
Uh, I have a report that I've actually gotten several times of a dump truck that get, gets parked over the weekend mostly on Hudson Drive. We can't, we don't have dump trucks parking on our street, do we? And it, they don't pull it up into their driveway or anything, it's parked out on the street. Part of it is it's big, big, taking up a lot of space out on the street, but the other part of it is it does create some blind spots where they park it.
Yeah.
So, I don't think we're supposed to have commercial vehicles like that, are we?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. So, it's on Hudson, they usually, on the corner of Hudson and Mount Vernon, but that usually comes in on Friday and stays till Sunday night is when it comes in there.
Sure the neighbors love that?
Oh, the neighbors are, are letting me know, and so I went by and saw it, and it does block, it does block the view when they park it in there, too.
Okay, we'll check that out.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Scotty?
I don't have anything to say but have a happy Thanksgiving and...
Eat lots of turkey.
Just be thankful.
And thank you. David?
Yes, sir.
Marvin?
Yes, sir.
Paul?
Do have one thing, uh, and this is something positive, um, was contacted by the, uh, Perfecting Praise Center, uh, at three eighteen Chambers Avenue, it's the Chambers Avenue Baptist Christian Church. They, tomorrow night, starting at six o'clock, they are having a Thanksgiving dinner for the community, and they wanted to invite everybody, so, uh, they asked me if I would, uh, spread the word about that. Pastor Tanksley, uh, wanted to extend the invitation to all the residents, so...
Good, newspaper did a nice job covering that big headline, I think.
That's all?
Any other? Okay, if there's nothing else to come for the council, we will stand adjourned.
Adjourned.
(laughing).